All right, if I could have everybody's attention, please. And just for clarification, I am not Greg Hanson, but he's excused. He's not feeling well, so I'm filling in for Greg. And it is 5:00, August 22nd, 2023. We'll go ahead and call today's meeting to order. If you could stand for the pledge of the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, we'll take a moment of silence, which is a break for a few seconds of individual prayer, reflection, or meditation. We also take this time to honor and remember our first responders and our men and women in the military who keep us safe locally and protect our freedoms at home and abroad. Their commitment inspires us all. Thank you. We have a few announcements. As you can see, to the, to my left, we are going to have a little celebration of the life of former Commissioner Charlie Erickson. And there is also one scheduled here in the board chambers on Tuesday, August 29th, at 10:00 a.m. County offices will be closed Monday, September 4th, in observance of Labor Day. We have board and council vacancies. Flagler County solicits registered voters residing in Flagler County for various citizen volunteer boards and councils, and the current vacancy is with the River to See TPO Citizens' Advisory Committee for an alternate. You can go to FlaglerCounty.gov and view all of our advisory boards, and if there are any other vacancies that pop up, you can check there. Our upcoming commission meetings and workshops, we have a beach management workshop, Monday, August 28th, at 2:30 p.m., regular meeting on Wednesday, September 6th, at 9:00 a.m., and our first public hearing for the budget is Wednesday, September 6th, at 5:01. We'll move into our recognitions, proclamations, and presentations section, and our first recognition is a resolution honoring former Commissioner Charles F. Erickson, Jr. And I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Is there any family for, if you wanted to come up and state your name for us, and then I'll go ahead and read the proclamation? Right into the mic, right there. Yep, right there.
My name is Rosemary Zetiro. I've been a good friend of Charlie for the last six years.
Thank you for joining us, Rosemary.
You're welcome.
All right, this is a resolution honoring the life and memory of former Commissioner Charles F. Erickson, Jr., whereas Mr. Charles F. Erickson, Jr. was born in Hartford, Connecticut, on January 27th, 1943, and passed away on July 31st, 2023; and whereas Mr. Erickson had been a resident of Flagler County since the early 2000s; and whereas Mr. Erickson had been a devoted two-term member of the Flagler County Board of Commissioners from 2012 through 2020; and whereas Mr. Erickson, as a county commissioner, was passionate about issues involving seniors, young people, and the disadvantaged. He attended every graduation of the Flagler Drug Court. He chaired the Carver Center Governance Board. He served on the Circuit 7 Juvenile Justice Advisory Board, the Flagler County Department of Juvenile Justice Council, the Flagler County Canvassing Board, the School Planning Oversight Committee, and the Transportation Disadvantaged Local Coordinating Board. And whereas Mr. Erickson had a distinguished career in the insurance industry for 35 years before moving to Palm Coast; and whereas Mr. Erickson graduated from the University of Connecticut, where he was a cadet in the Army ROTC program. As a First Lieutenant, he served stateside during the Vietnam War, informing families that their loved ones had been killed or were missing in action. He received the U.S. Army Commendation Medal for Meritorious Service. And whereas Mr. Erickson was an avid bicyclist who kept track of his mileage, in 2014, his odometer displayed 24,902 miles, equal to the circumference of the Earth. And whereas Mr. Erickson was a devoted supporter of the Flagler Youth Orchestra, never missing a performance. And whereas Mr. Erickson was passionate about many issues, including growth, while preserving the environment. And whereas Mr. Erickson was characterized as the voice of reason and led his life by his sense of purpose, he was always looking for solutions. He didn't have time for people who didn't want to help make things better and was always trying to do the right thing. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the Flagler County Board of Commissioners that it expresses its sincere appreciation and respect for the life and career of Charlie Erickson and expresses its heartfelt condolences to his family and the many others who held him in the highest regard and esteem. Be it further resolved by the Flagler County Board of Commissioners that a period of official mourning will be observed by placing his photo on the dais acknowledging his passing at our September 6th, 2023 meeting. To the family of Charlie Erickson, we know your loss is deep and your sorrow is great, but we want you to know that we share in your sorrow, and as evidence of our sympathy, adopt this resolution to be spread upon the record, and a copy thereof be transmitted with heartfelt condolences to the bereaved family. Approve this 21st day of August 2023 by the Board of County Commissioners. Flagler County, Florida, attested Tom Bexley, Clerk of the Court, and the Flagler County Commissioners.
Thank you.
Need to approve that?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Pardon me?
Move to approve.
I can't.
But I can. I'm moving.
You move to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, approves unanimously. Thank you. How are you today? Did you have anything you wanted to share?
Well, I'll probably share a few things next Tuesday when they have the memorial for Charlie at 10:00 a.m.
Okay.
But he will be missed.
Thank you. Absolutely. Did you want to accept this, or?
I think we should go to the family.
Okay. We'll save this for the family. Very good. Did you, anybody else want to say anything?
I think I'll wait to the memorial as well.
Absolutely. Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming today. I guess it's only fitting, since we're one shy, that Charlie is occupying the vacant seat, so. We have other proclamations today. The first proclamation is overdose awareness day, August 31st, 2023, as requested by Michael Feldbauer with the Flagler County Drug Court Foundation. Who's reading that tonight? All right, Commissioner O'Brien, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's my honor to read this proclamation today. It's the proclamation of the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners proclaiming August 31st, 2023, as overdose awareness day in Flagler County. Whereas the Flagler County Drug Court Foundation was incorporated as a nonprofit in 2009 and is currently the oldest nonprofit in Flagler County working in the world of recovery. And whereas the organization is composed of 100% volunteers, and whereas the Flagler County Drug Court Foundation's mission is to support and promote the Flagler County Drug Court program, helping our participants excel in their recovery from substance abuse and lead productive, healthy lives through community engagement, advocacy, and educational initiatives. And whereas community education on Narcan and the reduction of the stigma of people in recovery from substance abuse are vital initiatives for building a safer and more understanding society. By providing comprehensive Narcan training and awareness programs, we aim to empower community members to respond effectively to opioid overdoses, potentially saving lives, simultaneously combating stigmatization, excuse me, through education and open dialogue that can foster empathy and support, helping individuals in recovery to reintegrate successfully into society and lead fulfilling lives beyond addiction. And whereas the vision of Flagler County Drug Court Foundation is to operate a compassionate and supportive community where individuals in the drug court program receive the necessary resources and opportunities to achieve lasting recovery, break the cycle of addiction, and thrive as valued members of society. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners that they hereby proclaim August 31st, 2023, as overdose awareness day in Flagler County and encourage all citizens to participate in the Walk Over the Bridge event, starting at Wadsworth Park, going to Veterans Park. This event is to remember those who lost their battle of addiction to overdose and to end the stigma of addiction, so no one else needs to die from the disease of addiction. Adopted this 21st day of August 2023, signed, attested by Tom Bexley, Clerk of the Circuit Court, and will be signed by our Flagler County Chair of Board of County Commissioners, Greg Hanson.
Mr. Feldbauer, how are you today?
Thank you. Mike Feldbauer, President of the Flagler County Drug Court Foundation, and with me tonight is Renee DeAngelis, who heads up our Narcan program in both instruction and distribution of that product throughout the county. We like to thank you for this opportunity to be here and for this proclamation. It's so important that we get an opportunity throughout the year to advise our county, advise the people around us what's going on and how they can participate in resolving issues. Part of what's happening in our county, as I've mentioned at other meetings, and I'll reiterate tonight, is that we have been in the last three years, between the 5th and 10th, an overdose county in the state based on population. At one point in time, we were the highest overdose death county in the state, again, based on population. And I won't go into detail, but it's not where most people think it is. Okay? It's throughout the entire county. It's not centered in any one location that people might think it is. So the county has to be aware of what's happening. We're one organization that is working to try to better it in our county, not only helping the participants in the drug court program, but we've expanded with our Narcan distribution and teaching and instruction for the county people to save lives, save lives of Flagler County residents. Currently, with the fentanyl problem that we have countrywide, fentanyl has become not only a problem with substance abuse, but has become a poison. We have had more unintentional overdoses from people that are not in substance abuse because of this fentanyl and where they're putting it. So thanks to the Narcan that we'll be able to distribute with other organizations in our community, lives are being saved. So again, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and to receive this proclamation, and for the support that this organization, y'all, have given to the Flagler County Drug Court, because if it is not for you, we don't exist. And for the support that we get from each of the members that participate in our stuff. I really miss Charlie. Like you read in his proclamation, he never missed a drug court graduation. And when he came into the courtroom with that smile, it changed things. So we miss him dearly. He was a great man and a great participant in what we do.
Renee, do you have anything you want to add to it?
I'd like to thank you all for the proclamation also, and just to go on to a little bit more of what Mike was speaking about, this day is for the observance of those we lost to drug overdose. It is also to celebrate those who have survived drug overdose and are here to tell their stories. It gives a message of hope to everybody else. And as Mike was talking about, with the fentanyl being such an issue now in our country and here right in our county, education is ongoing, really, really important. And if you all would like to join us that day, we will go into more detail of how to educate you about knowing about fentanyl overdose recovery, Narcan, because I believe this is, it has to be a ground roots effort, boots on the ground here in our communities in order to really start to turn this issue around and save lives on a great scale. So again, thank you, and we hope to see you all on August 31st.
Thank you very much. Anybody want to have a comment? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two things. One, thinking about Commissioner Erickson, you know, when I first got elected, the first time I went to a drug court meeting, I went with him and sat next to him, and I remember him saying, "This is going to change your perspective on things. This is, you really open your eyes." And I've tried to go to everyone since. I know I've missed a few, but it is, it's really good work that the drug court does and the foundation to support the drug court efforts and those folks that are in that program, and we wish them the best. Second thing, I just wanted to, I was going to save this for the end, but if you ever wanted to understand the importance of Narcan, you know, that really hit home a couple weeks ago, and we had our deputy that was, that had to get Narcan twice because he was exposed to fentanyl during arrest. It wasn't even a drug arrest. It was a hit and run. I'm sure most people have seen it. It was on the national news. I remember getting ready for church a couple Sundays ago, and my wife says, "Oh, there's the sheriff. He's on the national news." And there was Sheriff Staley being interviewed about that terrible situation. So everything that we can do to support the distribution and wide understanding of the use of Narcan can help us in this battle to save people. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, of course. It's so important, and during COVID, of course, it was even more difficult and was hard, I know, with the drug court and things like that, but we're gradually coming out of that, so let's hope things get better, at least not worse.
Yeah, I was going to mention that, if you hadn't, about the officer, because it was very eye-opening. I mean, the effects of just accidentally coming into contact with it was just extremely...
Just to make the offer once again, if there are any county departments that would like to be trained in Narcan, our team has been certified by DCF, which gives us the grant to give it away, to do training. So we're there. Believe it or not, our group is the one to train the county health department. So we're there. If any of the departments in the county need the training, want the training, we're here to do it. So thank you again.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move adoption of the proclamation.
Second.
Thank you. Got a motion by Commissioner O'Brien, second by Mr. Sullivan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Did you want to get a picture? Did you want to come back up for a picture?
There's only a few of us. You should come all the way up.
Yeah, you can come all the way up, because there's only a few of us today. And our next proclamation is for National Preparedness Month, which is September 2023. It was requested by Jonathan Lord, our Emergency Management Director. Is that yours?
That's mine.
Okay, Commissioner Pennington has the proclamation.
Proclamation of the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners, recognizing September 2023 as Preparedness Month in Flagler County. Whereas natural disasters and human-caused emergencies have the real possibility of affecting our community; and whereas government agencies and disaster organizations cannot bear the sole responsibility in preparing for and responding to these disasters; and whereas during Preparedness Month, September 2023, community members are encouraged to take time to educate and prepare themselves, and those in the care for the emergencies and disasters that can impact our community for extended periods of time. And whereas Flagler County community members who are prepared can be a positive influence on their neighbors by sharing their preparedness plans and encouraging friends, family, neighbors, and coworkers to be prepared too. And whereas the Board of County Commission firmly believes the more people who are prepared, the quicker our community will recover, resulting in a profound positive impact on the quality of life in Flagler County. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners that we hereby declare September 2023 as Preparedness Month in Flagler County, encouraging all residents, businesses, and visitors to be ready for disasters and emergencies by visiting FlaglerCounty.gov/emergency or calling the Emergency Operations Center at 386-313-4200 to sign up for alert Flagler emergency notifications and to find and request information on our community training opportunities, including our Community Emergency Response Team course, as well as details about getting a disaster kit, making a disaster plan, being informed of the risks in our community, and getting involved in community preparedness. Adopted this 21st day of August 2023, and attested by our Clerk of Court and Chair.
We have Mr. Lord, our Emergency Management Director. Welcome. And your staff.
Yes. Good evening. Actually, I have with me our entire small but mighty emergency management staff here. It's a wonderful team of five plus. We have over 20 active volunteers that serve at least four hours in the Emergency Operations Center with us each week, and Jean is one of our very active volunteers for quite a few many years, who's able to come out this evening and join us. So I want to say thank you, Commissioners, for acknowledging National Preparedness Month coming up in September. A lot of people, when it comes to emergency management in Florida, think September's weird. Why not do this in, why not do this in June or May as June approaches? But September is the, actually, the peak of hurricane season. It is a national date as well for preparedness, but with the peak of hurricane season, it's no more apropos today than ever because of the fact that we actually have five systems that we're watching out there. None of them are a risk for Flagler County at this moment, other than rip currents, which are a problem on our coast. That's a good thing, you know, that the ocean is warmer than it's ever been this time of year, and which makes us, obviously, in our world, very nervous. You know, there was a tropical storm that just made landfall over in Calif, just south of California, and moved its way up into Southern California, and they're dealing with massive flooding, which is very unique in climate history. So, and we also have upcoming this weekend, which is a really good thing to draw attention to, is a second, for the first time ever that I know of, a second disaster Preparedness Sales Tax Holiday kicks off this Friday. So we definitely want to encourage our residents to shop local, but also take the opportunity to build up the disaster supply kits as we head into the peak of hurricane season. So thank you all.
Thank you very much. I was going to make mention of the coincidence that the tropics are heating up and then you come.
I had nothing to do with that.
Your fault.
It's just a computer map. I had nothing to do with it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve National Preparedness Month proclamation September 2023.
Second. Second by Commissioner O'Brien. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you to the team. Come on up for a picture. It's a rock solid crew we have right there. Thank you all for everything that you are doing. Our next presentation, we'll have Chief Dave Brandon from the Bonnell Police Department to talk about the 2023 Federal County Veterans Day Parade. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Chair and Commissioners. Dave Brandon, Chief of Police for the City of Bonnell, 1769 East Moody Boulevard. I wanted to come to you this evening to bring to your attention and to the public's attention at large that an effort is underway to bring back the Flagler Veterans Day Parade to this beautiful county. A while back, I was, I had seen Sheriff Staley's vintage Buick police car, sheriff's car, I should say. You'd be offended if I called it a police car, and was very curious, as the new police chief, as to what Bonnell's old police cars looked like. And as I Googled the images, I came across a photo, I hope it comes up here, of this photograph from 1963 of a Veterans Day Parade, which looks like it's on US 1 around the area of where the ACE Hardware is today, heading northbound towards the 100 Overpass. On the left is a sheriff's patrol car and a City of Bonnell police car. But it caused me to ask, does, do we do a Veterans Day Parade here? Because no one had told me about that when I came on board. And I spoke, the various different people I spoke with told me that it had come and gone, others had tried to put one together in different parts of the county, and so I asked, I asked our city leadership if I could proceed with that. I got their blessing. I then came and met with Ms. Petito, also Dave Lyden, who helped me connect with the Veterans Advisory Council and got their blessing with it as well. And so we're working, as we speak, to put a Veterans Day Parade for Flagler County together again. There is, our mission will be to obviously provide the resources, the support staff, and everything that would be necessary to honor and respect both the past, present, and future veterans here in Flagler County. So we're going to do that, we're very blessed that this year Veterans Day falls on Saturday, November 11th. The parade will start on time, sharp, at 10:00 a.m. It's not going to rain on our parade either, so there should be plenty of opportunity for folks to line East Moody Boulevard, which is the parade route that we're tentatively planning on. We'll start staging there at Lake Lucille by the Coquina City Hall in Bonnell, and then take the parade route through downtown Bonnell, heading eastbound towards the Government Services Building here, where it will, the parade will conclude, but then Mr. Lyden and his group will do a veterans ceremony here. There'll be food and other vendors and opportunities to get to know veterans when they get here. For about the last 20 years, I've attended the Veterans Day Parade in Deland, and to me, it's very important to get youth involved so that they can see the great service that these men and women have given to our country. But we also want to make sure that we get other organizations involved, like high school bands, ROTC groups, senior centers that have veterans that may not be able to get out can also participate in the parade, and other groups. This is a photo from the Deland Parade of the Seabees and their float that they had in the parade. We're going to have a website. It will be FlaglerVeteransDay.com, and folks can register online. When we get that website up, we'll also have a Facebook page to help promote the event. And we hope that folks will get involved. We'd like everyone from all over Flagler County to attend and to be involved. I've reached out to all the mayors of all the cities and towns in Flagler County, and so far, received a great response, and hoping that this starts a, you know, a new era of making sure that we recognize all of our veterans here in Flagler County for their service to our country. So these are some really great veterans. Some of you may recognize these folks here. Did a little research and found some of your photos. There's a program in Deland that I'd also like to bring to this parade. It's called a Hometown Heroes Program, where we take local veterans and we put them on a banner, much like the ones that you would see here, sponsored by a local group. I've asked Advent Health to do ours, and I'm waiting on their answer. And ultimately, these are posted on the utility poles that would line the parade route, and it's a great source of pride for those veterans and their family members to obviously see that and to encourage our community to support them, and to also encourage younger folks to get involved and serve their country as well. So again, Saturday, November 11th, 10:00 a.m., here in downtown Bonnell. So again, Saturday, November 11th, 10:00 AM, here in downtown Bonnell, the Flagler Veterans Day Parade is going to be a great event, and I hope all of y'all will help me spread the word to get folks involved and get them excited about doing this.
Great idea.
Thank you.
And you said you worked with, did this in Deland?
Yes, sir, I helped with the Deland Veterans Day Parade. A few years ago, we took World War II veterans and we created a float through the sheriff's office to get them into the parade. I've already spoken with Sheriff Staley, he's going to help us with the parade as well, help us with the COPs and with deputies and traffic control. Thank you for your service, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, this time we'll go to community and board comments. The next section is community outreach. This is a 30-minute time period that's been allocated for public comment on any consent agenda item or topic not on the agenda. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to address the commission. Speakers should approach the podium, identify themselves, and direct comments to the chair. At this time, I'll open up community outreach segment. Anybody wish to come speak to the commission? Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Laura Stillman. I live at 51 Flagler Drive in Marineland Acres. That might ring a bell because that is on your consent agenda. So consent agenda item number 70 has to do with the Stormwater Construction Project that's been going on, and I noticed that in that particular item, it talks about that we need to put some walls up near the dunes to protect around the fire hydrants. Totally understand, I agree. I was surprised to see that it was being proposed to put timber, and I know at other accesses onto the ocean that there has been wood there, but it just really makes me not understand why you would use timber that is going to rot. I would assume that at some point it's going to rot, it may not hold up as well against the dune sands, maybe it does other places. So I just wanted to bring that up. I was just curious why it would not be a concrete or something more substantial that would not rot away and have to be replaced and spend more money. Though timber looks nicer than concrete, but I also am one about, I don't want to keep using up money that could be taken care of upfront. Also, if somebody could make sure that the schedule of progress is updated once every month to two months, not that to take people's time away from doing their other job, which is more important, but I keep going out to look at your website, and it does not tend to be kept up to date. I think that would help alleviate some of the frustration with your residents that live there. Everybody's talking, every time you walk down one of the streets, everybody wants to talk about what's going on in that neighborhood because obviously it's been taking longer than initially planned. Sometimes you don't see any crews working, even though it's a perfectly beautiful day, it's not storming, and it's not a holiday. You just, you start getting frustrated because it has been so far overdue to be finished, that when you don't see any progress every single possible day, you start to talk, and so you've got some, you've got some neighbors out there that are really getting frustrated. So maybe some more communication might be able to assist with that, such as, there was a delay because of this. We don't need a lot of details, but at least kind of keep us informed, and especially since we're getting close to the end, I think they're even getting more frustrated, and I know that I am. Water pressure issues, FYI, a lot of neighbors are talking, depends on the time of the day, day of the week, you get half of the water pressure, then you sometimes do it other times. So it wreaks havoc upon, if you have a water heater, that you have to have a minimum water flow. So, but everybody's been great, and Mr. Warner is wonderful. He always responds back to anything I can contact him about, so you've got a good rep.
Did you need a response on any of those items? As I can have engineering do a response on the, I mean, timbers are, I won't speak for them, but they're designed, pressure-treated to last for a significant amount of time. We use them for boardwalks and everything, so they'll last, but eventually they'll have to be replaced, but...
No, I guess I just wanted to call it out, and if that was something that somebody else, you know, somebody on the commission might be concerned about, you might want to pull that from the consent so that you can talk about it some more. Just wanted to point it out, I didn't know if that was any concern to any of you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Brother Chair and Commissioner, County Attorney and County Administrator. Once again, I'm Daisy Henry, and I live at 503 East Strange Street, and we were here last, last commissioner meeting about the issue about the Carver Gym, and this was sent down to me, and I got it circled about the Hammock Dunes Care Fund, and I wasn't here at the end of the meeting for the comment by the administrator, but a lot of the things we had, we ironed out at our Thursday meeting at the Governor's Board, but a lot of things still have to be ironed out, and it seemed that the board is behind the eight ball and not knowing what's going on about it, and we got the update, but from my view, we're still not really considering the citizens, I mean, the people in the local community, and you're going around the issue of what we need in our own community. I can't tell you what to do at your house, and you can't tell me what to do in my house because that's your furniture, your paint, or whatever you want to do. And then when we were told that the PAL will not be putting any money, they're going to give in-kind, so I mean, that's like, you know, so you will have, and they want space, and we just added in addition to have more space for our programs, so whoever wanted to come in, because we didn't have no space in the beginning, and I think y'all need just, and I know that's y'all building too, okay? And I'm not rich, and I don't have funding, because according to the thing they say, it's a level of funding, but we do have, should have, some say what's coming into our community, and I appreciate the input of our, I think it was the chair, that he was asking question that our county administrator couldn't ask, because on the last, about the, I'm going to have a gym on Saturday, Sunday, is there a fee? And she says she didn't know, and the way things are going now, that just like in our meeting, one of the participants said, if I just write you a check, I can just come in and do what I want to do because of my money, and I know the Word of God said, the love of money is the root of all evil, but don't let the love of money destroy our faith in y'all as doing the right thing at the right time. Thank you.
I will say that we haven't workshopped this as a team yet, so when we do get that in front of us, it'll be a public meeting, so you'll be aware. Come on up. No, that's it, right? You're done? Okay.
Excuse me, we wasn't aware before the meeting, because the guy that I had on the board, he wasn't even told that the meeting was going on.
Okay, but when, all of ours will be publicly noticed, so you'll get noticed.
And they are working the ILA.
Yeah, it's still under work, so it hasn't come to us yet.
It's in the works, so we'll make sure it correct.
We're actually just in our first draft, we've only had one meeting as a group. We attended the last Carver Foundation or Governance Board meeting, just really to talk about the idea of expanding the inter-local that the board had approved back in 2011, to expand it beyond just Flagler County and the school board, but to bring in the City of Bonnell and the sheriff's office. So the meeting that we attended last week was really just to kind of let them know that we were working on it. Again, it was our first meeting, it's a draft, we've got a long way to go, and you may recall, I don't remember what month it was, but within the last year, the sheriff had brought forward a grant application to the board that he was looking to apply to a grant that would allow him to construct the 4,500 square foot facility, as mentioned in that newsletter from Hammock Dunes. However, he quickly realized that we don't have any additional land out there around the Carver, which is why that particular project really didn't go anywhere. The money that they have raised from the Hammock Dunes community, the $150,000, that is for additional programming that PAL intends to bring into the Carver Community Center, but on the budget, as mentioned, currently, the sheriff's office budget is separate from ours. The budget in our local agreement talks about the money that the county would lay out, and naturally, we can't control what PAL does with their money, which is why it was listed as an in-kind. It may fluctuate from year to year, but what PAL was looking to do was offer services and programs that are not in conflict with what's currently being provided. It would also take into account operating hours that were not currently being utilized, and it would also, so for instance, it would stay open until 10 o'clock at night instead of 5:00 or 6:00 PM. It would also allow for the center to be open on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday. But again, complementing what the school board currently does, not seen as a conflict or somebody coming in there to try to take over the Carver Center. And one thing I did want to clarify, because I misspoke at the last meeting, a gentleman had mentioned that they recently had given money, a donation to Carver. I had asked financial services staff if that was true. We couldn't find anything that was recent other than the $6,000 for the camera. There was a donation made back in 2021, $50,000, from the Carver Foundation that went to the county for, to be used towards the expansion that we recently completed. So I just wanted to go on the record by saying we did receive a $50,000 check from the foundation back in 2021. It didn't show up in our most recent budget, which is why I had stated that they hadn't given any money recently, but wasn't aware that they had done that back in 2021, so just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Chairman, just one quick question for I. The annex is essentially built, and the last time I checked, a couple of weeks ago, we were still waiting for a part. Has that part showed up yet, so we can get that open?
No, we're waiting on FPL. It seems to be a problem with a part that they're waiting on, so we don't really have the CO where we can move in. We are in direct communication with them on a weekly basis, so we hope to have that soon.
I think it's appropriate time to be doing this too, for a variety of reasons, including the fact we built that annex on there. I'll get it open.
I agree.
Thank you for the update. DJ, welcome. State your whole name.
Good afternoon, my name is DJ Lebo. I'm with the Early Learning Coalition of Flagler and Volusia, and I wanted to come and say thank you, we're on the consent agenda today, and I wanted to give you just a few facts and figures. We currently have 460 children enrolled in school readiness, which is subsidized childcare contracted through childcare providers that are in Flagler County. Last year, we had a total of 880 children that were provided services so their parents could work or go to school. That was 90,000 days of service, and again, so their parents could work and go to school. We also provided an additional 426 families with resources and referrals, so families call us and ask, where can I find good, high-quality childcare? Where can I find housing? Where can I find food? And we refer them on to other services that are available within the county and within the area that they live in. Sometimes it's right next door to them. And I just wanted to thank you again for your continued partnership with us. We want to serve families within their community, and you guys make that easy for us, so just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners, my name's Herb Schultz. I am a resident of the Daytona North subdivision. I've been a resident since October of 97. I know that what's going on is that we have an assessment tax that's being brought up and possibly put out for the residents up in that area. Quite a few things can go on with that as far as what to talk about. What I like to address this evening with my time is concerning drainage, and what I've watched, being up there, is that the county has a piece of equipment that they can go through in between certain roads, they have drainage ditches that are cut through there, and the piece of equipment they use is pretty wide. So as they go through to do this and dig it out, which is a great thing, drainage is good up there, anything that's along the side, it's been so long since anything had been done up there, is that any type of trees, brush, anything that they're digging out of this area, they're picking it up and they're putting it over onto the sides of the embankments. So what's happening is you're getting four and five-foot-high piles built all the way along these drainage ditches. So what's that creating is that it's creating a situation that these lots that border these ditches cannot actually drain into the ditch. So if we, especially with the hurricane season and the season we're in now, what will happen is as it rains, we get heavy rains, this water that goes onto these lots can't actually drain into these drainage ditches, so it's kind of a mute point. It's nice, you come in, you open up the ditches. It's not good that you build stuff up, now the water can't actually flow into the ditches, and it also creates a fire hazard, because now you've got a bunch of timber, brush, different types of woods that are all piled up, and as it dries out and it sits there, if we ever have any type of fires up there, that's just a lot of fuel to ignite, and it's on people's properties. So I just wanted to bring that up, bring that to attention. There's other things that we can go into, not tonight. I did take some photographs, I did send them to Commissioner Pennington so that she's aware of it, at least to see it, because it should be addressed. It's kind of like doing half the job. We clean the ditch, but we're not cleaning it up to where we have proper drainage into the ditch. So that's just one aspect of what's going on up in that area. Wanted to make everybody aware of it, I appreciate your time, and hopefully, we can come to some type of resolution pertaining to this assessment tax that we're thinking about doing. Hopefully, that does not happen, we already pay taxes up there. That's beyond my scope. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. I was going to ask you for the address, but if you've sent it to Commissioner Pennington, it's in good hands, so thank you.
Yeah, I live at 1854 Laurel Avenue, up there by the park.
Okay.
So I own a couple lots, they're legally bound together, because I have a horse stables on one of the lots, so I have a ditch that actually runs through between both my lots.
Okay, thank you.
So I gotta drive around the block in order to mow my grass.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Laura Fritz. I'm at 1446 Cottonwood. Don't know if that matters.
Thank you.
But this special assessment tax, and I see that we're planning on starting more of these in other underserved communities or underpopulated communities or whatever have you, okay? I think we really need to rethink this plan, because some of us, like myself and him, we have lots, we have several lots, I don't make any money, I'm poor. So now I'm being taxed, and at some point, can you tell me exactly how we're picking which side of the road, because my frontage is 165 feet, and I'm being taxed on 300, so I'm not really seeing how that's working out accurately. But I think we need to look at other avenues and eliminate and possibly spread, I mean, Heidi's excellent, she's brilliant, she's got a keen insight into General Services because she was a department leader for however long. So she knows what she's talking about. Get the numbers, spread it across the county. Don't, you know, start penalizing us because Mondex didn't do the job, they didn't get the inspections, all of the things that weren't supposed to be done, weren't, that's not our fault. We're paying all that tax double and again, over what we should be paying, and not really receiving what we need, and it's again, not the fault of General Services. I understand the expenses, but that needs to be spread out across county, not just picking up Espinola or Daytona North or these other service districts that you create because, for whatever reason, the county just treats us like redheaded stepchildren. All right? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Would anybody else like to come to the podium? Good evening.
My name's Monique Sullivan, and I live at 1279 Bayberry Street. I'm just here to, concerned of the assessment. I'm just here to concerned of the assessment tax as well. Taxes have gone up. My mortgage has gone up over $200. The garbage, which they just throw, he's right with the ditches. You know, I'm struggling out there to pay my bills, and you guys are just gonna throw this assessment tax on us? That's all I have to say. I'm in support of Daytona North residents.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Thank you for listening.
Anybody else? All right, seeing nobody else approach, we'll go ahead and close community outreach, and we'll ask the board if there's any items that they want to at least talk about on consent items.
Just...
Commissioner Sullivan.
I don't want to pull the... I don't want to pull these items, but I want to point out, because sometimes, we forget the significance of these. If you look at Items 7M, 7N, 7O, and 7P, that's almost $11 million in money that we're going to be spending essentially to support our beach areas and the areas immediately next to the beach. This all started back when Matthew hit, back in the fall, I guess, of 2016, and we've been dealing with the problem along the beach ever since then. I was trying to do a thumbnail sketch, but I believe, once we do the Army, a re-nourishment program in Flagler Beach, we will be spending upwards of $100 million keeping our beach in place and open. Sometimes, we forget about that, and I think it's time to also recognize our staff generating those kinds of funds over these last few years, because if they hadn't done that, it wouldn't have happened. They're just starting the problem in Volusia County, believe me. They're just beginning to realize how big a problem their beachfront is causing. So, I want to thank, you know, faith in the department and the other staff members, and want to make sure that people realize the effort that that has taken so far and continues. But just today, in the consent agenda, there's $11 million there that's going towards those problems. So, again, I just think it's significant, and it's been an all-hands-on-deck effort to try and get this done over the last few years. That's it.
And there... Anything for the consent?
Yeah, I just wanted to go the other direction on the social services side and recognize the good work and the importance of the Early Learning Coalition, the Family Life Center, the Free Clinic, and the work that SMA does in our community, and those are all outlined in our consent agenda. But, you know, DJ gave us the stats on the work that the Early Learning Coalition does in Flagler County, and I know those same kinds of impacts are happening for the other organizations as well, the Free Clinic and Family Life Center, and the work that SMA does with drug addiction and support services there. So, just wanted to recognize them as well.
Okay. I will piggyback on that. I know it's a tough year for the Family Life Center. They got some funding denied, which put them in a bind, so our contribution is very important to them, and it's actually significant in that it keeps their accreditation, and they're still looking at fundraising through the year. And I want to thank the radio station. Flagler Broadcasting has announced that Creekside, the funds raised through Creekside will go to the Family Life Center this year, which is nice. So, just wanted to make that point. And one point on 7L, in the agenda packet, that's on the resiliency grant. It was mentioned that the $500,000 was available that was previously held for Whispering Pines. I just want to make sure, moving on, that we take a closer look at that money. I think we need to be active in how we reallocate that money and not just pull it from where... For any part, anybody that needs it, we really need to be conscious of that, the fund and where it goes. And that's all I've got, so.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't hear any consent agenda items pulled.
No.
So, I would make a motion that...
Oh, Mr. Chair, I thought first we would do in the comments, because I did want to pull one item, if that's okay.
Oh, you did?
I apologize. So...
So, at this time, anybody have an agenda item, consent item to pull?
Yes, sir. I wanted to pull 7R.
7R is the approval of the scope of services to provide by the Center for Urban Transportation or CUTER, or the Federal Transit Administration Section Grant. Okay, we'll again pull that, put it to Item 8D.
So, that becomes 8?
That becomes... 7R becomes 8D.
Okay. And we move the others down.
Is there anything else? That's it? Anything? Commissioner Pennington?
Nothing else for me.
Okay.
So, I guess, I'll go ahead then with a motion to approve the consent agenda. Items 6A, 6B, and consent B O C C departments, Items 7A through 7Q, and obviously, not 7R.
Okay, great. Motion by Commissioner Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pennington. All those in favor of consent approval signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we'll move on to general business. Item 8A, confirm the board's policy of non-involvement in private covenants and restrictions. This is a carryover from last meeting.
Good evening, Chair Commissioners.
Mr. Mangle.
Just have really nothing to add here with this. We did our research. We did come back and find that there wasn't anything there, so we didn't have any real reason for that. Nothing spread throughout the minutes, nothing at the Board or at Board Accounting Commissioners. So, we came back and just had crafted this a little different than we had before, and so this time, we just want the Board action here, as you're seeing it displayed, that you will reiterate our policy of not getting involved in the covenants and restrictions, including in this instance, allowing them then to go in and amend their covenants as they wish to without having the Board getting involved in that. Without a closed wait, any questions or comments from the Board? Thank you.
I was just glad that we got a letter back
Yes.
from the attorney from Mr. Livingston that kind of explained it in advance, so that we were able to... At least, he acknowledged that the time was well-served in him doing his research and...
Do we wait on Commissioner? Yeah, just so we have a wait.
Cue the Jeopardy music.
And thank you, Adam, though, for doing that. What's that?
I can confirm, there's never a good time.
This is why I withhold liquids.
Commissioner, did you have any questions for Adam on 8A?
Sorry, if I'm holding up business.
That's okay.
No, I do not.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 8A, confirming the board's policy of non-involvement in private covenants restrictions.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Pennington, second by Commissioner Sullivan. All those in favor of the motion signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. I will move on to 8B, which is quasi-judicial, application 3358, request for approval of Veranda Bay Phase 1B, a final plat in the PUD district for 54 lots in Phase 1B, Hammock Beach River Club PUD. This is quasi-judicial, so if there's any disclosure of ex parte, Commissioner Sullivan?
Well, I'd just like to say, this is an item that's been around a while, Veranda Bay and its predecessors, and we've all... I have had lots of conversations, but nothing that would affect my quasi-judicial status in this case. But clearly, there's been a lot of information over the last two or three years about this that I've been exposed to.
Well, would just be pertaining to the plats of...
Yeah, yeah.
Anything specific to the plat?
Nope.
Okay. Commissioner Sullivan?
Oh, O'Brien? Yes, I did have conversation recently with Mr. Belchi and with Attorney Shmento.
Thank you. Commissioner Pennington?
No, I am not.
And I did meet with the Mr. Belchi and Mr. Shmento to hear their side of the discussion on the final, the issues we'll talk about. So, Mr. Mangle?
Yes, sir. So, here's the outline of the property, and you'll see these look a little familiar from prior items, and so I wanted to go through the preliminary plat, how we got here, very quickly. So, we're on the east side of John Anderson, and really, in that, on the east side, we're in that northwest quadrant of the east portion that you'll see here. And so, if you recall, back in 2020, we went through the approval of the preliminary plat, all six phases then as part of that approval. You can see the Phase 1B and 1C in that inset. You'll see it a little closer here. And so, remember, 1A and 2A were previously platted, and now, we're moving forward with a final plat on 1B, 1C, those yet to come, 2B and 2C. So, again, here's that graphic. This was showing the zoning and how those laid in with those, and so, all part of the PUD that we're seeing. Again, this graphic here turned to the side, so that north is on your right-hand side, south's to your left. You can see John Anderson at the top, intercoastal waterway towards the middle, the bottom there, but 1B, 1C being those that are closest to John Anderson on your right-hand side of that center road that's coming through. So, back in 2020, preliminary plat, six phases, 335 lots, so we had that approval that came in. 1A and the 2A recorded back in July 21st, 2022. We got the Phase 1B here with this item, 54 lots. 1C would be the 35 lots. We'll talk about that in just a minute. 124 lots in remaining, if my math is correct, in phases 2B and 2C. And so, those will be those that will be then south of that spine road, then middle for 2B. 2C will be the one that's adjoining John Anderson to the south. So, those are still yet to come. Goodness, touchy today. So, here's that cover sheet from the plat for 1B. This is that layout, so you can see there in the darker font, that area there in between 1A on the right-hand side, intercoastal off to the right, and so, 1A is already platted. And you see that spine road, Buena Vista Boulevard, along that middle at the bottom. That was platted, I believe, as part of 1A. And so, you have 1B then in the highlight, showing just the lot layout. Mentioned it in the staff report that these are 80-foot-wide lots. Nothing too special. We do have an area at the top that we do have a buffer strip that's there, so we're buffering against the parcels to the north that are outside of the development, and so that's happening with 1B. Couple of areas of tracks that come in. Of course, the one item that's of note was that we had the five-foot drainage and utility easement that was omitted. And so, unlike the 1A and 2A plats, that had this five-foot drainage and utility easement mentioned in a general note. That note has now been omitted from these two plats, and so, 1B being the first one you're gonna have that's gonna review that. My stance on plats, and I think you all have heard me talk about it before, the plats are a convenient method to sell property. They're the way for us to go and describe things versus meets and bounds. So, what we do is we take the big piece of property, we break it down to something smaller, typically blocks and lots, graphically. Along with that, that convenient method, you then include common areas. You include easements, tracks, things that are specific purposes, and you outline those in the plat itself, on the plat document. You may display them graphically. You may display them in a note with the intent. And recall with this one and its prior iterations, the 1A and 2A, that the reservations at this time are made in their entirety to the master developer. Some of that was mentioned because financing... Some of that was mentioned because we know there's a CDD that's out there. There's likely also to be an HOA. And so, how that's really gonna play out, they haven't decided at this point, and so we didn't have a whole lot of grief with that at this juncture of us doing the plat, realizing that we're trying to meet two sets of requirements here. We do have the PUD that's out there, and so, we're meeting our Land Development Code requirements, Article 4, being a largely ministerial act where you're applying the Land Development Code, its policies, its language, its regulations, to effectuate the zoning and the method to be able to divide land. And then, there's a lot of statutory guidance that's out there. Chapter 177 of the statute says, "Here's how these things are supposed to look." And so, in the end, you have the surveyor that prepares that plat to match what we had... He had said it was gonna happen before, the preliminary plat. More importantly, it's matching the PUD document that we had, that dates back even further back than the 2020. And then, you're also then having a reviewing survey that comes in and reviews it for consistency with our Article 4 requirements, our Land Development Code requirements, and Florida statutes. Why is that bit of narrative matter about the five-foot drainage and utility easement? A little quick response I've got there is that five-foot drainage and utility easement isn't particularly required. We did have a lot of discussion at the prior meeting about drainage and stormwater in this area. And so, one of the conflicts that we have in our code that was realized by the developer after 1A and 2A was platted was that the side lot line setback at five feet then matches the drainage and utility easement at five feet. Maybe not a problem until there's a section in our code, and I mentioned it in the report in Article 4, that says, "No portion of a structure, including the eaves, may extend into an easement." So, when your lot size gets smaller, you as a developer with success of home builders then want to come in and they want to build on those lots, and on, for example, a 50-foot-wide lot, taking away five feet on each side already, you're down to 40 feet wide for your home. Not a problem if your foundation's there, and then you can extend out with your eaves, which we allow for setbacks, but our code does not allow that within easements. You have platted easements, then the coincide. Hindsight would tell us, it's not a good idea to do that. But we also don't interject when a design professional acting on behalf of an applicant puts that together and says, "This is what we're trying to do." In this instance, the hindsight was, 1A and 2A would have been approximately 38-foot-wide home, 36, probably more realistic, in order to accommodate the eaves on each side and not have the eaves extended to an easement. The attempt on the part of the developer to correct that for 1B and 1C was to omit that note. And I have to concede to you that we don't have a requirement in our code that says you have to have either a drainage easement or a drainage easement of a certain width. You do have, as part of your plating, construction drawings, documentation that identifies your lots as A, B, or Cs. They're either gonna be kind of split drainage, or they're gonna be high in the back, low in the front, or they're gonna be high in the front, low in the back. That's how these all work. And so, you've got this grading plan that's part of our approval, our review for preliminary plat, that says how we anticipate these things to drain. And that, all intents and purposes, is irrespective of the inclusion of a drainage easement on the side lot lines. You know, you expect that grading is gonna happen this way, regardless of how you depict it. The easement, the benefit of having the easement is that an HOA or some party later can come in and do some maintenance, should that homeowner not do what they're supposed to do. In the beginning, your grading's there, everything's happy, everything's going just like it should be, but at some point, something later may happen, whatever that may be, and that could change the way that drainage happens on that lot. In the example here, I think in most cases, and the engineer, Parker, can correct me on this, I think most of these are gonna be draining from the back to the front. They're draining to the street. They're draining then into a common area. They're from that central drainage system, they all drain out, then to your ponds. And so, the rationale we said was, we said, "Okay, why is this exceptional?" I did mention in here that these are 80-foot-wide lots, so they're different from the 1A or 2A, because they're a little wider. So, that may be one point of an exception that you could consider. But we also said then, though, that this has been something that had received a lot of consideration, a lot of discussion at its initial discussion with the Palm Avenue folks to the north about stormwater. Stormwater concerns seem to be paramount. And so, we as staff came back and said, "Let's put in that five foot," even though developer has said admittedly they took it out for cause. It's not required in our code. There's no real rationale they had that they could find for it, especially since the lots were wider. And so, we said, "You could certainly do that," but then, as we came and prepared for this... we came and prepared for this meeting, we came back with a recommendation that said, put it back in. So what you have before you is a plat that says, staff recommendation, include the five-foot drainage and utility easement in that final plat approval, along with the conditions we've mentioned here. Now alternatively, and also the, I guess the other one of note is the waiver that you do have, this one, I don't think I had it in there because this one actually has two points of access. You have the acceptance of the bond. So why are we doing that? This one does have the waiver. The secondary means of ingress and egress because right now, depending on the timing on 1B, 1C, you may not have those connecting to each other. 1B goes up in the center, has an access at the end that will connect to 1C. Those will loop together. And so right now, that waiver temporarily allows that loop to not be there. Remember, you have to have the two points of access that are present in subdivisions in Flagler County. So this recommendation, you follow this staff's recommendation, would say, add that five-foot drainage and utility easement back in, except the performance bond and the waiver, along with the other conditions, scrivners errors, that stuff. We did give you an alternative, as we talked about in-house. We said, okay, you really need to have the five feet on each side, maybe you don't. What if we cut that down? Because these are 80-foot wide lots, what if we cut that down to three feet on each side? That would accommodate up to a two-foot eve, you'd have six feet in the center for your drainage and utility easement. Could we accomplish the same thing? And so we came up with that as an alternative. I also mentioned in the staff report, and you probably saw it, that anything within Article 4 can be waived by the board. And so you can, it is in your discretion, your power as the board, to waive a requirement. This requirement that we're talking about with the restriction that says you can't have anything within a platted easement is an Article 4 requirement. So just as well, the board arguably has a third option that you could waive that requirement at this point for the board, permanently waive it. Not a temporary waiver, not like what we're talking about for the secondary means of ingress, egress, but you could permanently waive the requirement for both of these plats, 1B and 1C. The language in Article 4 just says that the waiver can be considered by the board as part of the plating process. I think I'm quoting that correctly. I don't have it in front of me. So you could do it at any point up until the time the final plat's approved. So I do think that's open to you. So in reality, you have three choices.
Mr. Chair, could I ask Adam a question?
Absolutely.
So the waiver of the normal LDC requirement of not being able to have eaves overhanging to the easement?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And so what that would do in that scenario is then what you'd do is you'd kind of, you'd kind of do a little bit of both. You'd be telling the applicant, you'd be following staff's recommendation, put the five foot back in. We want that drainage and utility easement back in there. We think it's something important to have. But in doing that, you'd come back and waive it and say, you know what, we want that, we want that benefit of the easement to be there, but we don't want you to be penalized by having the penalty that says you can't have any portion of the structure, including the eve, extend into the easement.
You may not know the answer to this question, but it's my understanding that's the way Palm, well, Palm Coast doesn't have the requirement, I guess, in their LDC for overhanging, eaves overhanging into an easement. Is that correct?
I believe that's the case. I understand that to be the case. And you can be very specific because I think we're all talking about the same thing there, is we don't want the home itself, the foundation, to extend into an easement. But specific to the eaves, I think that could be considered a waiver for you that you could do tonight at this meeting. That would be following staff's recommendation, then waiving that eve requirement that would prevent the eve from extending into the easement.
Sorry. It would only apply to these plats, this plat?
Correct. You'd have to, each waiver, we're treating it almost as if it'd be a variance of, the language, I think, supports that, that you'd have to have the waiver in each instance where it would apply. It would not be retroactive.
What about 1A and 2A?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. And I think the opportunity that's still out there, available to the developer, we talked about this, they had argued some about, since the plat provides that the drainage and utility easement falls to the developer, like the language now, for other dedications on the plat, up until that time that they assign it to a successor or an assignee, that they had unilateral control to be able to waive it on their own. I think basically where we're at with that is, we don't believe that's the case because the plat's a controlling document for the county. The plat itself still has the five-foot drainage utility held by the, arguably held by the developer. And I think what's appropriate there would be a very limited replat that would need to be noticed, brought forward to the board and have that consideration happen then. Or potentially something similar, a retroactive waiver. But I still think that that waiver doesn't create enough of a record on the previous plats.
I would agree with you. That doesn't seem very clean.
We've only got 1A, right, 1B and 1C in front of us tonight.
Yes, sir. Yes, just those two.
Just those two. Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, it goes along with the same question, but 1A has already been approved.
Both 1A and 2A, yes, sir.
Was the, was the five, was the five foot in there?
It was.
Okay.
And that's part of what the developers realize now is that that's a problem for them.
Well, fire beware. So I, at this point in time, and over the last year or so, I don't like waivers anymore. We know that the fire department's not happy with the 10-foot access already. And we're looking at it in our new land development code we're working on. So since it's in there in 1A, I don't know why we should not just leave it in there. 10-foot, it's 10-foot between houses and how you handle the overhangs, I hear if maybe you have to require them to have gutters or something like that if you put the overhangs in. So I don't see any reason to eliminate something that is pretty minimal. And I know it's tough along the intercoastal waterway because those, you know, that's expensive land through there. But that's 1A, and they already have the requirement there.
We shouldn't confuse easements with setbacks. They're two different things and they're treated differently.
Right. I'm just saying these.
Right. But the others that the fire department has spoken about is setbacks, not easements.
I thought it was getting through.
Right. You have to have room. So the setback gives you the room. The easements are a different item.
No, I know, I know. I'm saying, but they're saying 10 is already tight. And so I don't want to leave that open at all.
Commissioner Bennington, do you have anything for Adam? The only thing I have, right, as we get to final plat stage, these should be very quick administrative approval of the plats because we've done the design phase. I have a problem with, at this point, staff recommending the addition.
Sure.
Because we shouldn't be doing that at this stage. Now, it's, so part of me is thinking, if you're going to mandate the easement, then you have to grant the waiver because it seems to be you're creating a hardship that you would then need to give some reprieve. But I'll, I'll, we'll go ahead and hear from the applicant so we can maybe clear up some of these questions. So if there's no more questions, we'll bring the applicant up.
Good evening. Michael Shmento for the applicant. Appreciate your time. I'll try to keep this quick. Also, as an attorney, I am a licensed title agent for two national title insurance companies. I know Mr. O'Brien has experience in that and reviewing plats and understanding title and easements. And I know you do too, Mr. Dance, when you were managing and running engineering companies. So we would like to have the note on the plat that staff would like to have in there removed for a very simple reason. And this is where the nuances of law and language need to be observed. To be very clear, there is no easement. This is not an easement. Okay? And when you review title notes and when you review plating, a note on the plat does not create an easement. An easement is a transferable conveyance of a property interest in a parcel of land. So this is all predicated on something called notes. It's not a dedication. You see on plats where they say dedicated, this track is dedicated to this one, this parcel is dedicated to this. This is a note that is causing this issue. And we take responsibility for this nuance because it was on the original plat. Sorry for distraction. So let us be very clear that there is no easement. It is a note on the plat that says the developer will reserve an easement to themselves. Okay? Even if you have an easement, argumentatively, okay, the fact that you can record a termination of an easement is the law. So getting ahead of ourselves, right, there is no easement. But even if you want to argue that there is an easement, you can terminate it. The easement is to the developer. The easement is not to any third party. It's not to any government. It's not to FPL. It's not to the homeowners. This imaginary issue that's not an easement needs to go away because it's creating this confusion that we're here today. And that's why we'd like it removed. So we'll start off there. So what we're asking for is simply to remove this issue, this note on the plat from the plat, so that we can continue on with the final plat. So one of the things that we've heard from staff is they're concerned with drainage, right? And we heard that very clear for the 24 hours of public hearings that we had on this project. We have our engineer here to talk about how it drains and how it complies with both state and federal law. This issue has nothing to do with drainage. The lots drain in a separate and different fashion that is shown on the construction drawings, that they have to be constructed and the county will approve at the time of the final acceptance. So again, there is no easement. Now, the issue that staff keeps talking about is putting this very unique language of a note and forcing us to do it. Now, I know I've talked to a few of you, and we can go through plat by plat that the county has approved over the last three or four years, and there's many of them. There is not a requirement, as Adam said, to put this note on a plat to create this cloud, this confusion that's before you. Second of all, the difference, as Mr. Dance said, between an easement and a setback, okay? Your code says that there's no overhangs or in an easement, right? And so that's your code. Palm Coast doesn't observe it and some jurisdictions do and some jurisdictions don't. But again, when there's no easement, the building setback governs. So really what we have here, there is no easement. There's just a building setback. Okay? When you go and look at projects such as the one on the hammock on Jungle Hut Road, when you look at Hunter's Ridge, when you look at ICI Implantation Day, when you look at the one you approved recently in the hammock for Ms. Gregory, there's no in this note language that requires or suggests that there's some sort of drainage easement. There's not. It's a setback. And what setbacks require under your own code is that the face of the buildings not get any closer to that setback. Doesn't have anything to do with eaves. It doesn't have anything to do with pools. It doesn't have anything to do that. They talk about building setback. So again, the nuance between easements and setbacks that's causing this disruption or this confusion amongst you all. So again, we're just here to ask that that note on the plat be removed so that this issue doesn't continue to confuse the community. On Phase 1A and 1B, the ones that were approved, again, didn't have any issue with it because, never brought it to our attention because it's not an easement. There was no conveyance of any interest in land. It's a note on the plat. And now that people have bought out there and they have builders, the builders are coming into the county and saying, this is what we're doing. This is what we do in all these subdivisions. And the county, you know, has issue with it because they perceive it, or staff has a perceived interest that it is a projection into an easement area. So again, if we can talk about this and get this note on the plat removed, I think everything becomes quite simple. So I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. We have our engineer here to talk about drainage, if that's an issue to you. And Mr. Belshi is here to talk about and answer any questions that you might have.
If there's no thing, I'd like to bring the engineer just for a quick question, if it's okay with everybody else. It's, we've brought drainage into the discussion. So just speak a little bit about the need for including a drainage easement on the side setbacks.
Okay. Parker Minchenberg, 1729 Ridgewood Avenue, design engineer. I'm probably the only practicing engineer that's designed as many subdivision lots as I have. And this is a very unique situation to have side lot line drainage easements. In fact, I can't think of any other plats that I've done, that I've been involved in, that have them. I think where the real rub came in was when we found out your overhangs can't encroach into these 10-foot, five- and five-foot side yard easements. So we have 50-foot lots and there's quite a few projects now out at LPGA, Edgewater, other venues that have these. None of the other municipalities have prohibitions from eaves going into easements, even if I had a plated drainage easement with a drainage pipe going down it. So I think with every lot, we're mandated by both the county and the water management district to put a minimum of seven grades on every lot. So if you look at the engineering plan, as Adam mentioned, some of them are A, some of them are B, some of them are C, which means if you're next to a conservation easement, for example, you drain from the back where the conservation easement is to the front. If you have a road in the front and a retention pond in the back, you break it in the middle and half drains to the front, half drains to the back. And then there are instances where the grade drops toward a retention pond and you grade them to drop from the road to the back retention pond. So irregardless of whether you have an easement on that side lot line, the grading plan has to be followed. And the building department makes sure that if the engineering plan says you're supposed to drain back to front, before they get a CO, that comes into place. So I think the issue really came up when we found out that the easement, you can't encroach into them with the eaves. And of course, these 50-foot lots on the intercoastal and 1A, and now these bigger lots, they want to build the full envelope. In the case of the 50-foot lots, they want to build a 40-foot wide home. So I think that's really the issue. And Mr. Shmento got into the legalities of what's an easement and what's not. But my opinion is, we don't do it on any other plats. And I think the first ask would be to eliminate it from these plats.
And just a follow-up. So the easement doesn't affect the effectiveness of the drainage design?
No. If you're a bird flying over it, you don't know if there's an easement or not. What's important is the grading plans met when the homes are built.
It's all based on the construction drawings, which have already been
Reviewed and approved.
Under construction. And they have to be met due to the performance bond. I mean, that's what's being placed to make sure it's constructed.
Well, they won't get, they won't get COs on the houses unless the houses are graded properly.
Right.
And this has no effect on the setbacks?
No.
So it has to be 10 feet between?
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Belshi?
Chairman, Vice Chairman Dance. I'd just like to have one thing.
Name for the record?
My name's Ken Belshi, 164 West Village Drive in St. Augustine. I take full responsibility for this problem. I don't know how familiar any of you are with plating, but whenever a surveyor prepares the front page of a plat, they take a big Word file and they drop it in there and they start editing different things. They send it to you for approval, et cetera, et cetera. Our surveyor included this note from a previous plat from a long time ago. I saw it. I read it. I had no idea that it would cause the kind of confusion that it's caused. So I take full responsibility that it was in there. Now, Adam did not request that it be in there. He never, this is going back to 1A and 2A, he never asked for it. We have a lot of notes in our office that we keep about conversations. It was never discussed. And so when we found out the problems it caused in 1A and 2A, I asked to take it out. And, you know, as Michael said, it's not been required in any other subdivision that we can find. And we can't find anywhere where these are generally included. So I should have caught it in the draft. I did not. And so now I'd just like to have it taken out.
Mr. Chairman, just one question for Mr. Bell. So what would be the problem if it stayed in there for B and C?
Well, because...
How would that cause a problem, just the words being in there?
Yes, sir. The, it creates, some people believe it creates an easement. And the LDC says that the eaves of the homes cannot extend into any easement. So it narrows the size of the home that can be built. There are homes all over Flagler County that are under construction today that have 10-foot setbacks where the walls are 10 feet apart and the eaves hang down into that setback. So it puts us at a...
I'm just trying to figure out what the...
It puts us at a disadvantage. We have to build a smaller house.
So you would do that if that language was in there? You would build a smaller house?
We would be required to, yes. Well, this, we'd be required to build a smaller house.
I mean, that's the bottom line on this.
It puts us at an economic disadvantage.
You build square houses. So you build square houses.
We have, yeah. We have to, we just have to... We have to, we just have to offer a smaller product on the same-sized lot.
So, I just wondering, what?
Just point of clarity. If you acknowledge, if the county acknowledged that a note on a plat does not create a property right, an easement, then all of this goes away. Because there is no side yard easement, it's just a setback. And we continue as we do in Flagler County for the last 20 years and into the future like we're doing today. So that's really one of the fundamental issues. I mean...
Is, Adam, just on what you presented, you're recommending, like, 1, 2, 3, remember that, the two slides?
Yes.
Is that recommendation in accordance with what Mr. Shmento just said or not? In other words, I think...
No. Yeah, no, no, R1B says put the five foot in. That presently, and I think you may have had folks just now that were maybe misspeaking a bit, that they were saying leave the note out. The note is presently not on the plat. So the plat that you have does not have the five foot note. After 1A and 2A happened, the developer took out the note. So the plats that you have, the 1B and 1C, exclude the five foot easement.
So I'm trying to get a feeling for why is the staff recommending that we put that in?
I think because of the discussion we had and the concern about stormwater and drainage. And so that we thought this was needed and that the board had emphasized that previously. If it's not a concern for stormwater, then I think we fought the good fight. I guess we can, we can resolve that it's been taken care of. I did hear something today, though, and I'm very excited about it. I will now announce to everybody in Palm Coast, the five-foot side and rear drainage easements that were graphically depicted on your plats by ITT apparently are not actually easements. So congratulations, those aren't easements. So I'm very excited because now this changes quite a bit in my world, and I'm sure it does for Palm Coast as well.
We're arguing language here, and I'm, you know, language as opposed to reality, how this thing is gonna, is gonna end up. So I think it's more to this than just some words.
And a point of clarification, our plat document does have the note, so if there's a different sheet that we should have got, our, under General Notes 1, it does include the language.
Oh, okay. I thought it admitted it. Maybe they edited, maybe it was added back.
If a motion is made, we accept the plat without Note 1 because ours shows Note 1.
I may have used the cover from, if, well, no, it's in the packet. Yeah, that should be the one that...
So it just needs to be clear that what we're looking at isn't what staff has.
Then I'm okay with you approving that. I'll also mention, just for the record, just to make sure, and I had looked at this today, Matanzas Lakes, City of Palm Coast, a plat from December of 2019 includes a five-foot side lot line utility easement. That's a note, by the way. In our own situation, we did have several, and you'll remember this in your history, Huntington Green at Hunter's Ridge, Phase 2A, five-foot drainage and utility easement plat and note. Huntington Villas, Phase 2A, also in Hunter's Ridge, five-foot drainage and utility easement plat and note. Huntington Green at Hunter's Ridge, Phase 2B, five-foot drainage and utility easement. So we've got a bit of a history. A five-foot end unit, Huntington Villas, Phase 2B. Veranda Bay, also about the same time, actually, as we were, May 12, 2022, Huntington Villas, then right after that, Veranda Bay. So we had it in our mind. We had the five-foot drainage and utility easement on the side lot lines, so.
But it comes down to designer, because it may or may not show, there's examples of both.
Not a requirement, but...
Not a requirement.
And then remember contentious discussion about stormwater. So we thought that was, we were doing good service. I'll, I'll quit talking about it. Thank you very much.
All right, if there's no other comments, I'll open it up for public comment. Is there anybody in the public that wants to comment on this agenda item? All right, so I'll bring it back to the board. Any further discussion? I mean, I'll just say that, again, plats to me at this stage are just administrative functions of, when we get to this stage, I mean, even some municipalities don't even have these as quasi-judicial items on agendas. They're administrative and they're included in consent at the beginning. So there's even a question of whether these are, should come to the commission as an agenda item under quasi-judicial or if they're just administrative. So there's even that discussion and back and forth about what's the appropriate way to handle plats. I view them as highly administrative when it comes to the final. We've already debated the design and the construction, and that's passed at this point. I do find it odd that staff is mandating something at this stage, which I don't think is appropriate unless, unless there was an extreme circumstance, but I don't see that as implementing a drainage easement over, it doesn't change the construction or the drainage design at all. It's still going to function the same way, whether there's an easement there or not. But, oh...
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I make a motion to approve application 3358, the final plat with the removal of or not the, without the inclusion of the note requiring the five-foot wide side lot drainage and utility easement.
So the motion is to approve without Note 1, as we see it? And the other conditions that Adam had on there?
Corrections. Yes, the other conditions, the Scrivener's error and the other conditions are, would be included in my motion.
Can somebody move the screen to the next page? Okay, so then accepting the performance bond?
Correct. Yes, sir.
And waiving the secondary. All those, okay.
Yep.
Do we need to repeat that motion?
Except the part there on the bottom about temporarily waiving the LDC, oh no, I'm sorry, that's different. Nevermind, I apologize. That needs to be there, yes, sir.
So as I hear it, it is a motion to approve with the removal of Note 1, which is on our documents. I wish this wasn't on two screens. Plus these items 2 and 3.
Yes, sir.
And go back one more page? And the correction of Scrivener's, right? So Scrivener's errors, we're just getting rid of B.
You're omitting B.
Omitting B, okay. It says a motion by Commissioner O'Brien. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Pennington. All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Opposed by Commissioner Sullivan. Passes 3 to 1.
Mr. Chair, before you go to the next item, I just want to let you know for the record and all commissioners know that the action you just took is a quasi-judicial action. I know that you like to think of it as administrative, but by law, this is a quasi-judicial action. Just so you know, I don't want the record to reflect that we're abandoning quasi-judicial application to plats.
No, the fact that we actually made a choice of two different options would, would relegate that to being not just administrative, but...
Quasi-judicial.
Quasi-judicial. But in most instances, staff approve.
You'd made the comment, and I want to make sure the record is clear so nobody thinks that we've altered our approach to land use.
Okay, understood.
Chairman, just a point of clarification. In Item 1B, where it says except where a larger drainage and utility easement is specified, it seems to me that's okay to have that in there. We took that out.
We took out B.
Yeah. It's just that, the last part of B.
It's not included. That language isn't included.
Right. So I was thinking, is that, do we want to, do we want that out where it says except where a larger drainage and utility easement is specified?
Well, it's already been decided. It's...
I just mentioned it. That's why, one of the reasons I voted no.
Okay, so we'll move on to 8C, quasi-judicial application 3359, request for approval of Veranda Bay, Phase 1C, a final plat in the PUD district for 35 lots, Phase 1C in the Hammock Beach River Club PUD. Mr. Mengele.
Yeah, distinction here with this one, I'll go through faster here so we can get it done quicker. So that this one's 35 lots and then does include the buffer strip along John Anderson. So I think it's 100 feet wide. That shows up on your plat. Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't. That, like the note, that may be there, maybe isn't. And so there we go. That's the cover sheet from the plat, and I can't see that note there. And then the location of this is a little darker on the right-hand side. And so this time, you're to the west of 1B. Those are those, that's the layout there, and then you can see that tract. I think it's 1C, you can't see it from here, 1C4, but that's the buffer area there that's adjoining John Anderson's. That's the distinction between 1B and 1C that now we're moving to the west. We had the same recommendation with this, and so for consistency, I'm going to assume that you're going to make that same motion. So I'll close and wait any questions or comments. And if we could, for the sake of brevity for all of us, let's put their stuff on the record already for this item as well. Thank you.
The previous comments on record for this item? Okay, with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, is there any new questions for staff or for applicant?
Just that one, since we have it again.
Okay.
Does that 1B, the last, the last part of it, except where a larger drainage and utility easement is specified, do we need to leave that in there, even though we take the rest of 1B out?
I don't know why the language, why it says that, so Adam would have to explain...
Yeah, I mean, it's there. I just, just trying to...
Back to the theory that the notes actually do something. And so what this was saying before is that you would have a reservation for five feet each side, on the side lot lines for drainage utility purposes unless a larger easement specified. And so the idea is if you got a 15-foot, seven and a half on each side, then it's specified. It's shown on the plat. So where you don't have those, the note applies. But if we don't think notes do anything, then it doesn't matter.
So this is just saying that this applies unless it's stated elsewhere that there's a bigger easement than, than that would apply?
Yeah.
So... Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of application 3359 for...
Let me go back and, does a quasi-judicial ex parte, do we carry that over from the prior item as well? Or do we need to announce it?
I think you just simply say that the ex parte's hold.
Okay, so to the board, does the ex parte hold for this item?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Same with me. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve application 3359, request for approval for Veranda Bay, Veranda Bay, Phase 1C, final plat with inclusion of the notes that we have, well, with 1A and C here in front of us and the second page there, the other requirements, with the exclusion of the Note 1 regarding the five-foot wide lot drainage and utility easement.
All right, so you have to bear with me. I'm confused. This is just for 1C?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so can you restate it just so that 1C, because I think you mentioned 1A or one, you mentioned another, and I just want to make sure it's clear.
I apologize. So the motion was to approve application 3359 for Veranda Bay, Phase 1C, which is the final plat, and with all of the requirements that has been outlined by staff, with the exception of this 1B, the note on the front of the plat, that delete that reference to the five-foot wide side lot drainage and utility easement.
Okay, got it. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner O'Brien, second by Commissioner Pennington. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Commissioner Sullivan opposes. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to 8D, which is going to be a carryover from consent. It's approval of the scope of services provided by the Center for Urban Transportation Research, or CUTER, and authorization for the execution of an agreement for technical assistance and eligibility and application to Federal Transit Administration Section 5307 grant funds. Who will speak to that? I asked for it to be pulled, too, so I wasn't meaning to, I don't object to this, but I had some, just some clarifying questions, so I'm sorry if I kept staff here longer.
Not at all. Good evening, Commissioners. Trevor Martin, Flagler County General Services.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So appreciate, appreciate the effort, Trevor. The, so I just was a little confused in the reading. This is a new grant opportunity that we haven't had before?
Correct. Yes, sir. Yes, we are eligible for it, but we have not applied for it.
So what confused me was the language in there saying that, that Fallujah County has gotten these funds to our detriment in the past, or, help clarify that for me. I don't understand.
So the way this particular grant works is we're funded for urbanized transportation. Our urbanized area is shared with Fallujah County. So it's Palm Coast, Daytona Beach, and I believe Port Orange. Because we have not applied for this grant in the past, we have essentially given up our side of the funding to VOTRAN.
So it has been a grant that's been available, we just have not applied?
Correct. Yes, sir.
And we're going to spend $100,000 to pay the, I'm not, again, I'm not objecting to that. We're going to pay to the consultants that money to formulate our plan and have our application process and have all the things we need to do in line so that we can get approved for the grant.
Yes, sir.
And that's going to result in 960, possibly $960,000.
That is what we are allocated annually right now. Yes, sir.
And this would be new funds that we haven't had before.
Correct.
Okay. It just was a little confusing. I didn't know if we had been leaving money on the table for, using business speak for a while, or what the story was, so...
So this, yeah, this is something we're going for. This is kind of the last hurdle from making us a small rural transportation agency to a larger, more urbanized.
Is there restrictions on what we can use the funds for?
It is, if, I don't believe the map is in there, but after the 2020 census, they had changed what they consider to be urbanized. I believe it's mostly by population density. So any trip that is not, that is originating and the destination is within that area, that is what we can invoice for.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions.
I'm good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion?
A motion to approve item 8D.
Second. Yes, 8D, right.
8D.
Yeah.
All right, have a motion by Commissioner Sullivan, seconded by Commissioner O'Brien. Call the question. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, seeing none, motion carries.
Right, just public comment.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry, I was trying to...
You're good, you're good, you're good. We'll go back. Is there any public comment on that item? All right, seeing none, vote stands, no public comment. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to item 10.
Thank you. I only had two things, and one of them I already talked about, which was the Carver Community Center update. The only other thing that I wanted to bring up was in advance of our first public hearing on fiscal year '24's budget, which will be held on September 6th. I wanted to see if I could receive consensus from the board. When I presented to you my tentative budget to the board, from that point moving forward, any changes, deviations have to be publicly addressed and discussed. But heading into that first public hearing, I would rather have a budget that is probably more in line with what we look to adopt. So I'm asking to forego the request to increase that front foot assessment in Daytona North and just keep it flat, continue it at the rate that it currently is, even though we did advertise for an increase. I would ask for consensus or direction from the board to keep that flat so that when we come into the first public hearing, we're not having to have staff change in between first and second public hearing to make those changes. So I'm just looking for consensus from the board because at this point, the budget belongs to you, and any changes will have to be identified through that process, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Does that change the millage rate?
No. The, it's a front foot assessment.
It's going to owe us less money.
It's not the county millage rate, it's the amount that we would levy as part of a special assessment. So there's a few things that we levy. One would be like your mandatory solid waste, you've got seawall in certain areas, you have marine land acres drainage. This would be the front foot assessment for Daytona North. Currently, it's at 58 cents a front foot assessment footage, and we were looking to increase it to $1.16, we were looking to double it. I would propose that we keep it at the 58 cents, and maybe we relook our five-year capital plan on paving streets and maybe make more of an emphasis on paving those in that unincorporated area.
Okay, but if we had increased it, the assessment, wouldn't that be more money in the overall budget than, than what, that if we kept it flat?
It generates about $250,000 a year.
Okay, so what I mean, it could have a minuscule effect on the millage.
Only for the residents that live in that community, but what I would...
Doesn't affect millage.
No, but it affects the amount of money in the budget, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Right.
Yeah.
But I would, I would look to probably rethink how we apply the five-year work plan so that we can decrease the amount of maintenance that we have in that area, which would then negate the need for additional money for maintenance. Maybe just rethink what we're doing internally. So I'm just looking for direction from the board if you're inclined to do that or not, I just don't want to have to be days within each other.
I'm, I'm good with it, and I actually think moving into the next fiscal year, we spend some time looking at this assessment, because I've got a lot of questions, and I think we have to keep it until we answer a lot of those questions, I don't know that I'm ready to withdraw it, but we need to spend some time on that.
I agree also.
But I'm good at keeping it.
Yeah, I agree.
Flat at 58, yes, I agree, and I think we do need to do the work to find out the real nexus and tie that back even to the 58 cents as, as a district period, so.
Well, I think the residents have spoke, they just need some transparency on those funds and if it's even applicable, so.
And that's the, just the quick on the transparency, I noticed, because I've been having a lot of questions coming out of the west on this, and I want to ask Ms. Petito if you could help me get the figures for, back in May, we did a pool of the reserves out of that fund, and turned it over to Roden Bridge, it was about a half a million dollars. But I checked, I think last week, and we still haven't allocated where that's going out there. So it's possible if I can get kind of an accounting of, of the reserves and where they've gone or where they'll go for the rest of the year.
We can certainly pull that, it would just go into the maintenance, so it would just be an accounting of what streets received additional services. I know that they were working on some drainage improvements, things like that, but again, we'd have to pull the numbers through the work order report.
And then with this change, will we still be allocating, I think in this year's budget, $635,000, I think it is, for Daytona North in the Roden Bridge? There's a line item that's created for this year's budget, it's about $635,000. Will that number stay the same, even though we're agreeing to go, to go less?
If it is, if it's what's listed as Daytona North, I'd have to look at the revenue, but it would be decreased, because you're not going to be able to increase your efforts if we're keeping it flat. So in other words, you would be receiving the same service that you're currently getting, you wouldn't be receiving additional.
So will that, so with that, because I, I get that, I totally understand that, will we be reducing the $635,000 in the budget that's allocated as a line item in Roden Bridge for Daytona North services? Will that change our budget?
It would, if the 630 or the amount that's in there, that would be, I'm assuming the collection, not the carryforward reserves, but whatever was collected.
I think it's a separate line item, I'm sorry, I don't have the budget in front of me and the tentative, it's a separate line item outside of that fund that was added this year. So we'll just need to take a look at that before the September 6th and see if that number's going to change. And that, if the way that it's allocated would impact your millage.
Right, because...
Right, because we're going to drop that number.
You wouldn't need as much money.
We've never allocated money like that to Daytona North in a separate, outside the fund, and suddenly there's $600,000 for...
I'd have to talk to finance, I don't, I don't know if I'm following you, but if it's listed as Daytona North, then it would have come from the front foot assessment. If there was money sitting in, say, a reserve in that fund, and that was carried over as part of this year to do a work, the only thing that we would show in the budget for next year would be a revenue offset for Public Works, where you would have your gas tax, and then you would see that front foot assessment.
Yeah, and that's not showing the gas tax.
If you could just get those questions to Ms. Petito, and then she can respond to us all and...
Okay, that'd be great.
And put that clarification, that would be great.
We certainly can.
For the next September.
And that's it, I didn't have anything else.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Aden?
No report.
No report, thank you. Make my meeting go faster, thank you.
Well, it's your first one, so.
All right, at this time, we'll open up for community outreach again, another 30-minute time period allocated for public comment. Anybody wish to speak to the commission?
Good evening.
Name?
Y'all hungry yet? My name's John Skeels, and I live in Daytona North. And in addressing some of the issues out there, there are some things being done, but the community itself is still the way it has been for quite a long time. The allocation of money and the increase of the special assessment, I think, is a little bit high. You have several new homeowners in that area, so the taxes that are being taken in, the revenue from that should even boost whatever shortcomings you feel there is having out there. Because there's a lot of drainage maintenance and, and issues out there that have just been left to the wayside, as somebody spoke this evening, you know, digging a ditch out and piling it up on the sides, not really leaving anything, you're, you're causing more problems, it'll worsen back in eventually, so forth, so on, I mean, common sense stuff. So I see that the special assessment really for some of the older homeowners out there is going to be more of a handicap for them, because, I mean, a lot of them are retired and living on fixed incomes, and it'll cause quite a burden on a lot of those individuals.
And I don't mean to cut you off, you'll still get your time, but we, by consensus, we just decided not to increase the assessment, so it'll stay the same.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but I just wanted to make some comments on that anyways.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Next speaker.
Hi, Denise Calderwood, Palm Coast resident, Flagler County resident. I just have to admit, I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I just get overwhelmed every time I come to the commission meetings and, and see that, that item 7B, I guess, the surplus that y'all are just devoted on to, to, I guess, give away, to the, you know, to auction, or three van, I mean, you know, three turtletop buses and a van, okay? And the years of those vans, I mean, the van and the buses, 2013, 2015, and 2009. I currently have a 1998 bus and a 2002 turtletop bus on the road that carries 15 senior citizens in each bus, so we can take them to fund recreational activities out of county, and then also within the county area. We have also offered the, one of the buses to the Flagler County Historical Society so that they can continue or start, or restart their historical tours of Flagler County, since all of these people keep moving in every day and don't even understand Flagler's county's history. You know, and it's a great fundraiser opportunity for them to raise their own revenue. For over three years, they've been trying to get possession of a van or a bus from the county airport, and I'm not speaking on their behalf, I'm speaking on my behalf of, you know, having an organization called Family Matters of Flagler that has been providing transportation for these, these senior groups for over six years. And Commissioner Sullivan, I did attend your Department of, you know, Transportation Disadvantage. For the past year, I've been monitoring that program, the buses that are sitting out here, you know, underutilized, under, underused, because of the fact, the way the grant that the county has always resubmitted, always the same, to just to take medical and kids to the schools who were over age 18. This is ridiculous, that you all are giving away our assets, not assisting the not-for-profits that are in Flagler County, that some of them even have your own name. Yet I'm glad you're at least acknowledging that, okay? Seniors, you know, have difficulty here, we have the highest concentration of 90 and above, and several of these people shouldn't be driving, if you look at the accident counts. This is why we need to have Take Seniors on Fund Trips activities. Thank you. Reconsider this.
Thank you. Anybody else, any more public comments for this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close community outreach, and we'll move to commission reports, and I'll start on my left, Commissioner Sullivan.
Just, just one item, and that is that something that's coming up again, and we may or not have a chance to talk about it in a meeting, you know, the city of Flagler Beach now is going to, is having another meeting about needs that they have that they feel they can't handle by themselves, and are looking for support from the county and the other cities. Message came in, and they list 12 items that they want to talk about this time. And so I guess my question to the board is, Leanne and I, we were both there, you were there, Chairman, at the, at that meeting, do we want to go over that and at least have a discussion about any items to recommend pulling or adding before that meeting occurs sometime in September, which is not that far away, and so on.
I know, it's difficult to do without the survey, weren't they going to do a survey of why people come to the beach, so that we had some sort of idea of how we could appease or correct that issue?
Right, right, well, on that point, I think our tourist development office has every statistic that you could possibly come up with on why people come to Flagler County, why they go to the beach, why they don't go to the beach, and Amy, I think, could, could address that. But I, I do think that that is, that information is readily available. I might be wrong, but I believe that information. Do we want to get a quick briefing on that at some point, so we, we can talk to it, you know, that, that could be a possible?
I just want to workshop it, but was there a date for that meeting?
It's in September.
I believe they held two dates for that meeting, I want, 20th comes to mind on one of them, but I can certainly check.
Just got to know, Commissioner Hanson and I are both out, the 13th and 14th for the FAC policy meeting.
They have it on the 13th, which is a Wednesday, and then the following is the 20th. Right now, they're being held as tentative on both of those, 13th and 20th of September.
But, I mean, just for information, if, yeah...
20th, do you want to do it the 20th?
It would be better for...
That way you can be in the tent, yes.
Since we did it last time, I just bring it up that we ought to at least...
But we should workshop the items, and at least...
Well, there's a workshop coming up on beach, correct? Maybe we'll tail it in the, into that one.
I'm okay with that.
Talk about it.
Okay.
We can certainly add it to the August 28th workshop, I'm assuming you're referring to at 3 o'clock, or, I'm sorry, at 2:30?
Yes, ma'am.
For that one, okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. We should begin?
Nope. The only thing I want to say is, yes, the Flagler County Historical Society has been asking for a bus for quite a while. We want to do some, some outreach out in our community, take people out to do ag tours, and thank you, Ms. Calderwood, she actually stepped up and bought a bus and brought it to the, she did, she bought a bus for the Historical Society, and they're fixing the air, which was the only thing that needed to be fixed, and they should be on the road here in the next month. So thank you.
Commissioner O'Brien?
I'm not familiar with, did, you receive, you received a letter with a request to go to another meeting, and there was a suggested agenda, I'm not sure what you're talking about, I don't...
Commissioner Sullivan's talking about the, the joint municipal meeting that we had Flagler Beach pulled together, and we met out at Flagler Beach to talk about beach-related issues.
Okay.
And, and they're going to have a second version of that.
Second meeting, anyway, you know.
There was an agenda, I saw a rough agenda, if you haven't seen that.
So you're talking about putting, having us discuss that agenda in advance of the meeting?
Yeah, because, well, okay, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay.
I said, but, yeah.
Okay. Other than that, I, no, appreciate the, the work that you did chairing the meeting today.
Thank you. Just a few, I hope Commissioner Hanson gets well and rejoins us quickly. The only other thing since the last meeting was just, last meeting we had on transportation was when Mr. Marvin Clegg was here, and, and we spoke briefly about his ideas, which were then reiterated in an op-ed on Flagler Live about citizen participation and budgetary processes, and I followed up and researched his, those comments, because I think we have a trust issue with the, with the electorate that we really need to overcome. And, and I'm, I'm intrigued by the idea, I talked to Commissioner Townsend in St. Lucy County, who spoke highly of their processes, was going to send me their recommendation recently on their budget. They actually, she told me that they recommended a flat millage, but they came back with some other recommendations. I just think it's, it's, I would like to do some more research and maybe bring something back when we, when we reorganize and look at our rules and procedures again in November. Because I think the secondary component to that is, is the trouble I have with our, our messy attempt at the Halfpenny Sales Tax, and how that just didn't, it, it didn't go well, we didn't look good in that process, we didn't handle it properly, so we kind of invited that kind of feedback. And I think a similar process, I think when we look at big items like an MTSU or a Halfpenny, we should have a process that we've all talked about and put in place that involves community outreach, that involves stakeholder input, and, and a more engaged public participation component with education, because without that, we're not going to buy, we're not going to get residents' buy-in on something big that we want to move. And, and I think we can, again, maybe put that in part of rules and procedures, when a certain item that fits a category, we have something in place that we kickstart. So if it's a multiple, the municipal taxing district or something, that we start on that process, and we, we identify stakeholders, and we, we start having public meetings. Just my early thoughts about the maybe, you know, maybe jugs, maybe to juggle your brain and think of something else as well, but I would like to further that discussion at some point.
Can I ask a question? So the, the Halfpenny Sales Tax, I, I guess I don't understand what, what the issue is, because that really never rose past the level of staff making lots of recommendations about possible future revenue sources. It was never, it was never agended, it was never, it never went past just a, just a generic discussion in my mind.
Well, it went to the point where we asked the other municipalities for their support, so there was...
Officially?
Apparently, there was a consensus given by this board to have Ms. Petito send those letters out.
Yeah, she did. Not for me.
So, again, it just goes back to it being a little...
Big, you know, so, I mean, I never perceived it as that at all, you know, I think it is Ms. Petito's responsibility to give us all the options, you know, and if, if staff did some work on, on research about it and numbers or whatever, and we want to take it further, that's one thing, but I can tell you, I, I never perceived it as, as that at all.
Right.
So I'm just wondering, it, well, we'll just, we'll just leave it at that.
Right, it's just thoughts, as I was pondering, you know, recent activities and stuff, we just have to do a better job of pulling in stakeholders on those big items. I mean, it, it goes back to the successes with my, my participation in successful ventures like the Halfpenny Sales Tax with the school district.
Yeah.
I've been in ones that weren't successful, and, and there's things you can pick out from those, so we need to learn from those successes and move forward.
Right, I, I kind of, kind of agree, but not totally agree. And one of the problems is, other than referendum... And one of the problems is, other than referendums, when you go out and get a vote, that, that does give you a full response. How do you decide who we discuss budgets and things with? We have boards and committees that we have a hard time filling, and part of those, some of those boards and committees are to provide information back to us on, on where we should go. So I'm not as, as happy with the thought, I mean, that's why we get elected, we get elected by the people, and we're here, it's a republic, it's not a democracy, it's a republic, and we're here to represent the citizens. Now, if we don't do a good job, then we get voted out. But, but this is not a full democracy, and I, how do you decide, well, we're going to talk to this, this guy or this woman, because, because she's an expert in budgeting? Well, she didn't know anything about our budget probably, but she may have some, some thoughts, I, I don't disagree with that, but who makes those decisions on who do we talk to, who do we don't, beyond our, our committees? But I agree with referendums, too.
We don't have to necessarily sit a commission, like, you know, a grace commission or whatever, even though it's nice, but it could get colluded. But in the budget workshops going next year, we could, as a board, instead of kind of hearing staff's opinions and thoughts, take it department by department, that tentative budget, and talk about some of those line items, or, you know, there's...
Well, we could do that, we used to do that.
We should do that.
When I was first here, we did do that.
We, we might, we wouldn't be here in the end of August, talk, you know, rolling back things and changing things, if we started really early, every month, in the, in a workshop, saying, okay, we're going to look at these three departments in this workshop, along with whatever we're workshopping. And we say, so I get an idea of why Daytona North has $600,000 allocated, or there's 25, you know, fleet cars, or whatever, whatever the issue is, so I get an understanding of why they need what they need, and then, and maybe we can pick up efficiency there, and then the public would know that the board did their job going through the tentative budget and found all the cuts they could, and they still need to implement a half cent sales tax, or whatever it is. And maybe that's the, the try next year.
And, and again, I just, obviously, I can't argue with the fact that that's why we were elected, but part of our job is to build, at least as I see it, is to build trust with the electorate. We do that through, you know, working as a team respectfully amongst each other, reaching out through different avenues, through being as transparent as possible, and, you know, just, that's one example, was that budgetary commission on, so that there's, you know, we have some really smart and engaging individuals that can bring something to the table if it's, if it's, but we have time to work on it. It's not something that's going to be immediate, but I think we, at least I would like to further discussion, and I'm only partially that way, as far as how that kind of would look, but I just think the recent experiences have not looked favorably on our local governments, and I think we have room to improve, and I know it's in our strategic plan, transparency is a big component of it, and want to carry, carry that forward more, but obviously, it's a group decision, but, so I think maybe in November, when we, when we reorganize and, and look at rules and procedures again, we can maybe have more of a discussion, at least I'll bring something to the table. But that's all I have, but with that...
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.